All right. Good evening, everyone. Amy, are you ready? Great. Chris is all fired up and ready to go. We got Zoom connected and... Is everybody out there tonight as of yet? Okay, got it. All right, welcome. Let us go ahead and call to order tonight's meeting of the Johnson County Council, February 8th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Rob Henderson.
Here.
Melinda Griesmer.
Here.
Pete Ketchum.
Here.
Jim Eisen.
Here.
John Myers.
Here.
Ron Deere.
Here.
Jonathan Myers.
Here.
Thank you. We do have all in attendance and we do have a quorum. Pete Ketchum, would you mind to lead us in the indication, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Everyone that are yet, for prayer, please. Dear God and Heavenly Father, we are grateful to have the opportunity to meet this evening the council with elected officials and department heads. Pray that they'll be with us this evening to help us make some good decisions, to listen to the information and proposals set before us. Pray that we all travel home safely tonight. We pray for these sins in Jesus' name, amen.
Would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we consider tonight's agenda, we have a couple of potential amendments. Proposed to add as item D 6.5, so after drug-free community before local road and street, want to add 6.5 auditor. And we'd like to delete item E 2 under other business, AMIT Fire Protection District. And we'd like to add F to an old and new business jail update. In addition to those, two additions, one deletion, are there any other comments or amendments to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Thank you. You have a motion from Jim Eisen, a second from Pete Ketchum to approve tonight's agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you. Public comments. I'd like to take time now on tonight's agenda to welcome anybody to the podium, state your name and address, or even Zoom, if there's anybody out there. Not hearing anything, okay? All right, I will... I don't see anybody approaching the podium. I will go ahead and close the public comment session of tonight's agenda. Moving on to item B, appointments. Edinburgh County Economic Development Board. This was a follow-up from last month. I was tasked with reaching out to Wade Watson. I did so. Mr. Watson has expressed his interest to continue serving as our appointment to that board. So with that, I thank him for his service thus far and appreciate his willingness to continue. And I would make that nomination. All right, I will entertain nominations. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve Mr. Watson to the Edinburgh County Economic Development Board.
I have a motion from John E. Myers and a second from Jonathan T. Myers to approve Wade Watson as our appointment to the Edinburgh County Economic Development Board. Any further nominations here? None? Okay, thank you. With that, nominations are closed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thankfully, thank you. Moving on to routine matters, the consent agenda. Council members, if there are any items in this portion of our agenda that you'd like to pull out for individual discussion, please let me know. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. Motion from Jim Eisen, second from Pete Ketchum. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item B, salary ordinance amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. First up, COVID primary election. So we have in our packet tonight... There's a letter of explanation. From Trina McLaughlin, clerk, regarding appropriation of grants. There is a... Apparently, we looked at this in January at our meeting and there was a incorrect fund number. So we are requesting this correction. Any conversation or discussion? I have a motion from John E. Myers, a second from Ron Deere to approve item D 1 as presented. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you. Next up, community corrections, adult grant.
Good evening. I'm Jason Crania. I am the Executive Director of Johnson County Community Corrections. I come before you today to ask for our grant funds to be appropriated under the following line items where we can actually use that grant money. We had... The DOC grants us this money every year. In 2020, they gave us a grant extension instead of actually making us reapply for the 20... The first half of 2021, we believe that they will grant it for the second half of 2021, too. So we... There was some confusion. We thought that since it was an extension, that we didn't have to do this, but obviously. We... So we are asking that we are allowed to use these funds and that it is retroactive to the 1st of January. Any questions?
Any questions for Jason? All right. Thank you, Jason. Want to entertain a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion from Melinda. Second from Pete Ketchum. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing nothing. No, that carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to VASIA.
Good evening. Kevin Barton here with Lauren Ryan Nielsen, the Director of the Johnson County and Shelby County VASIA Program. The matter that we're requesting in 3.5, if you should do those together, but I believe is that... As you may know, the major funding for VASIA comes from the grant obtained from the Indiana Supreme Court. The Supreme Court awarded the VASIA program the grant on December 23. That amount was in the $71,040. And the breakdown of the amounts that you're seeing is the request for authorization to spend those amounts in accordance with that grant. They have to... I think the 4 and 5, I think those are actually less than more money from past years. Okay, I stand corrected that we've retained, the Supreme Court allows us retain and still to use. The... I'm sure Ms. Ryan Nielsen can explain the breakdown of the proposed budget better than I, but essentially, the request that we're making is in accordance with the funding proposal that was submitted at the annual meeting in September. Basically, what the request was and that was approved was that Ms. Ryan Nielsen would be paid full-time by Johnson County and then the remaining funds would be used to support the program. As you may recall, Johnson County has to have a county component to receive the state grant and so hence the way this is formulated in that regard. There's also a Shelby County component that she has to give to Shelby County for authorization on. I think the major change from last year is that we had asked that Ms. Ryan Nielsen be moved to the state from Johnson County, excuse me, so that the Assistant Director, Rita Janus, could be made full-time this year. It's my understanding that that was approved by the approval on the... In the Johnson County budget for Ms. Ryan Nielsen, so this is basically the completion of that process.
I have just one point I'd like to make that in watching the council meetings the last couple of years and now being up here, and I'm trying to get myself up to speed with the public who's watching. Believe me, there are people who watch us. When we do things like acronyms, VASIA, what is VASIA? Sounds like a lotion or something.
Sounds like you're dating yourself, Mr. Deere.
But VASIA stands, it's an acronym that stands for Volunteer Advocates for Seniors and Incapacity-aided Adults. The short summary is it's probably been around some 15, 20 years originally. Started with the program up in Lake County and was under the Social or Family and Social Services Administration till the 2008 recession, when it then was moved to the Supreme Court. In essence, it's a public guardian program that supplies a guardian to people who do not have anyone, either from friends, families, or just sometimes somebody who turns out to be disruptive. So that's kind of the basis of the program is that I think the timer mission is to deal with nursing home individuals. Typically, there are the assistances, making sure they're Medicaid eligible and signed up for all benefits. There's assistance being provided to them. We've also identified other people in the community that can benefit from services. Although I think we're kind of watching, we've had a few cases this year that have been very time-intensive. We've realized just how maybe limited we have to be on that.
Can you explain, Ron, how you're different from CCOA? Because I know a lot of seniors come to them as well.
And CCOA is enjoying the I Council one.
Yeah.
I know that.
Well, VASIA was, I guess, it's a program that's under the Supreme Court, so it's set up to provide, actually provide the guardian and to provide fiduciary services. It's my understanding, least CCOA is kind of an advisory group that will provide assistance to the elderly, but is not set up to actually provide the guardianship services. So CCOA is one of the agencies that VASIA works with, including like the senior service organizations to... For referrals of people who may need guardians. Typically, we get... Probably the major source of referrals are coming in are from the nursing homes where they have a patient who just, you know, who needs somebody. But there's also, like I said, the community component, so it's not just restricted to nursing homes, but it can also include the elderly and the community incapacitated people.
Isn't that correct? I know you have staff members that are funded, but isn't it correct to also use volunteers to assist people in this program?
Well, the primary role is that the director, assistant director, are to actually recruit, train, and oversee volunteers. So that's was the primary difference of how Indiana is set up versus other states. Because a few states, Indiana, I think, Texas, are set up on a volunteer basis. Other states like Illinois, California are set up on a publicly funded program. So there were a substantial number of volunteers, although I have to say that the COVID crisis has really eaten into volunteers because volunteers can't go into the facilities now. And I think quite a few of the volunteers, I think, have kind of told Lord, well, you know, let us know when things get back to normal, but we'll... We're going to take a leave for right now, but I think the volunteer numbers have dropped. Hopefully, when we're through COVID, we'll get the numbers back up.
Thank you.
You provide a great service. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll be the first to motion.
Motion to approve item D 3, D 4, and D 5 as presented for VASIA 2021, 2019. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I could also ask that be retroactive to January 1st.
And that it also be retroactive to January 1st.
Actually, the part-time rate as listed should be retro to 12/17/20.
And the part-time rate retroactive to 12/17/20.
Thank you, John. Melinda, will you provide a second on that emotion?
Yes.
The motion. Thank you. We have a first from John E. Myers, a second from John T., Jonathan T., a second from Melinda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you. Okay, next up, item 6, Drug-Free Community.
Hi there. I am Michelle McMahon. I'm the coordinator for Drug-Free Johnson County this year and here, if you can hear me.
Oh, there she is.
Hi. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, awesome. Well, I'm Michelle McMahon and I am the coordinator for Drug-Free Johnson County. And we have only submitted a portion of our budget at this point in time so that we can continue to keep things going, to pay for our Zoom account, to pay for coordination. All of that will be coming back next month with all of our grant requests for our local funding. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have. We're really excited about this year. We have some great grant applications coming in and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, a question. Is this excess or not excess? This remaining $10,077, does that go to one individual? Is there one in particular?
We only have one admin. I'm the only admin on this. And what it is, is I have a contracted salary and we do a minimum of... I'm not exactly sure where you have $10,000, but we have a statutory state requirement that we have to spend a minimum of 25% of each of our... In the funding, so we have to spend 25% of our total funding on prevention education, 25% on treatment intervention, and 25% on law enforcement. And we're actually... We do have some funding left over once we split this, if we split it all the way into quarters. But this year, we're putting more money back into those. So that's why it's not quite as much, because we're actually putting that into grants and trying to fund more in the community. Does that answer your question?
So you are the administrative portion of that 200%?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And I'm sorry I'm catching up here, but this Jonathan Myers. So you're just asking for the administrative portion at this time to be appropriated?
We are, and it was a request from the Auditor's Office because to keep things going and to go ahead and so we can get our Zoom account, we have a paid Zoom account, and to upgrade and renew our website management, things like that. So our board sat down and only did the allocation for budget. So I will be back next month with the rest of it.
So the 75% for the treatment and prevention and justice?
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually going to be a little bit more in each of those categories, like I said, but we will be back. This is less than 25% that we're asking for now to go ahead and be allocated.
Make the motion, Mr. President. Motion to approve item D 6, Drug-Free Community as presented, non $25,845.
I have a motion from Jonathan T. Myers, a second from John E. Myers. Any conversation, discussion?
Thank you for what you do.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, item 6.5.
P. Morgan, Attorney Auditor, and thank you for adding me to the agenda this evening. Before you, requesting a... I'm steaming up here, I'm sorry. Transfer funds into a new line item. I emailed each one of you individually, basically to make you aware of, or continue to make you aware of some staff shortages that we have in our payroll department. And I find myself in a need to get a body in that position. This is a little unique. The line item this evening, we are asking for is a new line item that will go into the Auditor's Budget. But I have an employee who is continuing to be paid through continuation of payroll program that we have. So to be clear, this is a short-term fix to a problem. And if in fact, an approval this evening, I will be back next month to ask that that line item be completely funded for that brand-new, the new line item. So try not to read it directly from here, but...
What is continuation of payroll?
Disability.
I mean, you said it's funded from continuation of payroll.
We have someone on the taking advantage of or part of the disability program here that the county offers. So we'll be paying out of that line item, but it's only, I believe, at 60%. So the money that we're transferring will come out of that line item into the new line item that we're asking for. But there won't be enough money in there to cover both of them.
Just to clarify, the county has a disability, short-term disability policy. It's called salary continuation, where the employee gets paid 70% of their salary out of their regular line item.
What she said. So this is county-funded, but this is not a private insurance policy. It's... We found that.
The Auditor's Budget is through food and beverage.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, so it's out of the food and beverage collections.
Be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions for Pam? We'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval, as presented.
I have a motion from Ron Deere, a second from John E. Myers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, that carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so that was crazy when I talked about always being at the end of the agenda, even if people get to cut in front of me. Luke Maston, Highway Director. I'm here for items 7 and 8 on your agenda. Item 7 is an additional appropriation request in our purchase of property line item. This would help fund the purchase of property needed to extend Mullenix Road north of Smith Valley Road in the future. We're anticipating the need to do that at some point after I-69 is complete due to concerns about traffic in the Wakefield neighborhood. The timing on this worked out to where utilities are relocating for the I-69 project. They originally intended to go, actually acquire an easement where we would need to put the road in the future. So we were fortunate that we were made aware of that. We coordinated with the utilities that are purchasing that easement to make sure that we can both co-locate in that area and still leave that option open for us in the future. I can go over 8 or we can do one at a time, whatever you like.
Let's take each item that's presented on the agenda. So looking at item 1 in your narrative, two words always... You say the term "very expensive," that kind of jumps out there with respect to the future work. I guess a timing of that, more from where I'm coming from, I'm not asking to put a figure on anything, but as this body considers financing options for what is bound to be a big heavy lift out there in the next few years, you got a timeframe for this particular item? Because this would be kind of ahead of the others, I presume.
It could be.
Could be.
The key to the reason that we're doing this now was just to make sure that we have the ability to do it in the future with the utility issue. In terms of cost, honestly, I'd be throwing a guess, but it's going to be millions of dollars. We have to cross two creeks to continue the road to the north. Those two creeks, when they meet, Sabro 37 now, come together. So Indi has the benefit of one bridge to cross where these two creeks intersect. We will have to probably cross them separately and it's going to be pretty expensive to do so. So while I would like to be able to build that quickly, I think the price tag alone is probably going to mean it's going to be a while before we can get it done. But we know that we're going to need it at some point. We want to make sure that we protect our ability to be able to build it in the future. But millions is probably as specific as I would get. But more than a few...
Thank you. You have other questions for Luke on item 7A, which is item number one in his memo?
Yeah, I have a question. I was looking at the budget. There is, if I'm reading it correctly, there's $30,000 in the 2021 budget for this. And this is in addition, the 80 is in addition to... Correct?
Yes, that would be in addition to that. There are, I mentioned in the memo, there are some small intersection radius improvements that we're going to try and tackle on Clark Township this year that will require the purchase of Rite of Way as well. So I wanted to make sure that this appropriation plus the amount that was already budgeted will leave us enough to do both of these things this year.
So this is all going to connect to 69 from Mullenix?
Yes, so this would essentially extend Mullenix Road north from Smith Valley Road to connect to what is Bluff Road right now in some form or fashion. We haven't nailed down exactly what the alignment is going to be, but yes, it would connect that missing piece of the eastern side frontage road.
And the reason you're buying this is because you want the extra space for the traffic or why?
So we will... It's private property right now. So we will, it's private property right now. In order to make sure that nothing is built in our way, it, it's important that we go ahead and acquire the right-of-way. The reason that it's an issue as of right now is because the utilities that are relocating for I sixty-nine had identified the, this place that we need to put the road as where they were going to acquire an easement for their I sixty-nine relocations. So we were fortunate that we caught that before they got too far along. Had they gone ahead and acquired those easements, it really would have prevented us from making that connection in the future. We just wouldn't have had that option available to us.
So there's no potential of them overriding this move?
Part of our coordination with them was identifying what we need and then identifying what they need. So we'll be side by side as far as the road right-of-way goes and the utility easement goes.
So how many acres do you think this is going to be?
So the, our purchase, proposed purchase will be just under five acres. The bulk of that is property that's on the northern side of this, of this parcel that runs along the creek. But that allows us to, it gives us flexibility when it comes to designing the location of the new road and exactly where those bridges are going to be.
Yeah.
We'll have to, we'll have to look at several different options to try to figure out what, what's the most cost feasible solution to get across those two creeks.
So you're going to buy the property, you're not going to eminent domain, that's what you're doing?
Well, the, that would be the first step in the eminent domain process if we reach that point. I mean, we are acquiring it at right-of-way. We've developed thirty percent plans, at least for the portion of the road that goes to the northern part of the church parcel there. And we may go ahead and build that depending on if the Speedway parcel is redeveloped in the future. So, but requiring this road right-of-way, that can ultimately lead to the eminent domain process, but that's not where it starts.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion for item D seven.
Make the motion to approve item D seven.
Second.
Have a motion from Jim Eisen, second from Pete Ketchum. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries.
Okay. Item eight is our motor vehicle highway fund eleven seventy-six. Eight A is an additional appropriation in our equipment maintenance line item. This is intended to cover some fairly substantial costs, unfortunately, for the cleaning and material disposal of our asphalt emulsion tank in our back lot. That emulsion tank is used for a variety of in-house materials for chip seal or fog seal, total patching, et cetera. So ultimately, when we got into it, and actually started cleaning, we found that it was in pretty bad shape. There's a timeframe on how long you can store those materials. So we hadn't had it cleaned before, which is part of the reason that the cost was so high. And it's an amount that would be difficult for us to fit within our appropriations for this year's budget. The second item, eight B, is for a three-year contract with Cartograph to update our work management system. That tracks requests as they come in, tracks the work that we do on those requests. It also maintains our equipment inventory and tracks the work that we do to all of our equipment in our trucks as well. The dollar amount is the amount for that three-year period. I am proposing to go ahead and incorporate the entire amount now, which would allow us to encumber whatever is remaining at the end of the year to cover the future payments that we know are coming.
I have a question for anybody, just a process question. Is this routine to do an encumber for three years?
It's been done before. People do it differently. They remember their encumbers.
I mean, just as a new guy on the block, you know, what, what is the advantage to doing it this way and what if we didn't do it this way?
I think in this case, since it's his own fund, like if it was general fund, it would be different, but since it's his fund, it's a little.
You're broader.
Yeah, you're more restricted in what you can use it for.
And do you, when you have a contract, this is a three-year contract?
Yes.
So the contract therefore requires you to say we're going to pay for it for three years, so their safest way is to encumber it, right?
We could, if we wanted to, just encumber when we go through the budget cycle in the summer, encumber the expenditure amount for the following year. That's, to me, is just, it's kind of some of that extra work that we could handle pretty easily with an end-of-the-year encumbrance. We would not be spending any more than what was in that three-year contract or what was approved for the appropriation. So just from a budget management standpoint, to me, it's easier to just encumber that money, whatever is remaining in the next year's budget.
Okay.
So it's already available. Not that I don't like coming to council, but.
It's true, I don't have to get here at six.
I do want to comment that I appreciate your very thorough and complete explanation. It makes it easier for us to, for me at least, to understand what it is you're suggesting and, and what the issues are all around it. And I hope that other departments do as much in the same when it comes to explanation for their request, but it was very good.
You're welcome. Commissioners say that I'm wordy and I overexplain.
Well, from one wordy guy to another, hey.
Luke, I have one other question.
Sure.
You have in your, in your notes here, your wordy notes.
Yes.
That you were able to eliminate a dignity entry in the office position.
That is correct.
Covering this.
That was our, or that was my plan. We had four administrative positions in our budget in the office. The timing worked out to where one of those employees actually retired about the time that we were kind of starting this process up. The ability that this gives us to, it gives us several different benefits. One is we're not pushing paper in the office anymore. Our staff will have the ability to input their information in the field. They'll have the ability to make new requests when they see something that needs to be done. So we're going to kind of get away from paper, which is good if you've ever seen my office. In addition to that, this gives us the ability for residents to submit requests or concerns electronically as well. Even to the point where they could take a picture of an issue and send it to us. It automatically gets logged into the system. And we have the ability to then communicate through that system directly with the the quester if we have any follow-up questions or anything. So we're joining the computer age slowly but surely.
Very good, thank you. I would entertain a motion for items D A and D eight B, D eight A, D eight B.
Second.
Have a motion from Pete Ketchum, a second from Ron Dear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you, Luke. Moving on. Yeah, moving on to other business. Item D one, highway department, interlocal agreement with Barbers and Overgarden Road Impact Fees.
So we completed a road impact fee study that we performed jointly with the town of Bargersville. With the intent of identifying what a per-trip impact fee would be for new development in the White River Township area. So that's unincorporated and the town of Bargersville's limits. This would be for new projects that are needed, anticipated needed as more growth occurs in that area. It's not a fee or a revenue source that can fix existing problems. It's purely intended to address new issues that we're anticipating as we give more traffic volume. So that study was complete. And under the state statute, we have the ability to kind of partner like we did with Bargersville. But the statute states that any zone improvement area that includes more than one planning jurisdiction, which this does, counties and Bargersvilles, requires us to enter into an interlocal agreement that identifies how we're going to jointly use those funds to address the projects that were identified in the study. So that's what this interlocal agreement is, is the culmination of our work with the town to start to prioritize and outline how we're going to join the town.
The, the memo of information you provided talks about collection of the fee and how it's used. You know, how it's to be prioritized, spending from that to be prioritized. Who is the actual owner of that account, or is it the county that collects it, or is it the town of Bargersville?
The, the answer is both.
Okay.
So any building permits that are issued by the town, the fee is collected by the town and held by the town.
Correct.
Same goes for the county, building permits where the fee is collected. That is collected by the planning department and then that money is kept by the county. So that obviously creates a problem and we need to figure out how to get those two funding sources together so that we can actually start some of the projects. That's, that was really what we accomplished here with how this was set up. We, as long as receipts are fairly equal from the county and from Bargersville, we will tackle these projects essentially fifty-fifty. We do have some consideration in here because realistically, every year, we probably won't be collecting the same amount. It's going to depend on who gets building permits, who gets how many. When commercial and industrial comes in, that will factor into this quite a bit as well. So there are some considerations to where we can do something other than fifty-fifty for a phase of a project and then try to equal that back out later as more revenue is collected.
There's mention, there's mention of the impact fee review board. Has that board been established?
It has not. And that's a statutory requirement. There are three specific people that are required for that, a realtor, engineer, and CPA. That board exists. Essentially, the process will be, we use an engineering manual that estimates the number of trips to a building or a site based on the type and the size. If if someone that would be responsible for paying that feels that they have justification on why that fee is too high, that's what that review board exists for. They can petition the board, make their case for why they think they're in a different situation. And then that board is who ultimately would make that decision.
So who decides who's on the board?
So.
You?
No, not me. Ultimately, it's the town council and the board of commissioners who would appoint a representative for that. If it was me, I would vote no. I don't have free requests, so that's why I'm not allowed to be on it.
Well, this has been a long time in the, in, in the making. And I think it's another step forward in, in just collaboration with other governmental bodies in the area. I think Mr. West would like to comment as well.
I have a question. Are they looking to expand it just outside of what are we talking about, Bargersville?
That's always a possibility. But it would have to be done as a, a different study in a different study area. Reason that you focus on a specific area is, is you try to focus on where you think that growth is going to occur. The study estimates at a ten-year span, what do we think is going to develop? What parcels, what types of developments do we think are going to come in, in that ten-year period? So creating a zone in a place that you don't think you're going to see a lot of additional development at ten-year timeframe ultimately won't end up collecting much in the way of fees and allowing you to accomplish too much. Really, you have to kind of focus that area on where you think that growth is going to be quickly. And we have a very obvious area here with I sixty-nine.
Ron West, Johnson County Commissioner, thank you for letting me address this. I thought it was only appropriate that I come this evening to explain to you my opposition that I've expressed in our commissioners' meetings. And if you've been staying up with me in the Daily Journal, they've done a rather good job of covering, I think, my opposition. But I just wanted to come this evening to reiterate some of the concerns that I have in the, in our local agreement and the ordinance for the impact fee. And first, I'll just talk about the funding aspect of this. If you go to the interlocal agreement under project funding, it says that the parties shall endeavor to share the cost for all projects equally. And the word endeavor gives me pause here and concern. Endeavor is kind of a loose term. It also says that the parties may jointly agree to equitable funding contributions. And I assume that that equitable funding means that if one entity doesn't raise enough money to complete their part of the project, that the other entity would then supply the funds. So an example might well be, we have a project that's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar project. The county raises their one-hundred-and-fifty, and Bargersville comes up with seventy-five thousand. This would allow the county then to go ahead and put in the other seventy-five thousand and manage the project. And I have some concern there when you're using county taxpayer dollars to supplement a project for another government unit. It also says if a party covers more than fifty percent on a project or any phase of the project, the party shall, if possible, make up the difference. Well, that's almost an opt-in warrant. When you use the term shall, I mean, you must. And then you put in there a caveat, if possible. So those are some of the, the funding things that I'm concerned about. If you look at exhibit C on page four, so paragraph B, it allows either entity, the county or Bargersville, to do work without payment.
Yes, no, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there aren't any exhibits to this interlocal.
No, I'm just talking about.
They don't have it before then.
Yeah. If you look, I know they didn't have it, but I'm giving them that information under exhibit C, page four B, which is a part of this overall process. It clearly states that the parties may do work without repayment. And I took a great deal of opposition to that in our commissioners' meeting. I just couldn't understand where one, one government entity would do work for another government entity without repayment. And so I just merely asked if that line item be stricken from the agreement. I got pushback on that because of the timing. There seems to be an, an essence of. There seems to be an essence of timing in this, getting this done rather quickly, and I don't understand the reasoning for that because it's going to take a little while to generate the funds that are going to be used for these various projects. So anyway, I brought that up. It also says, if possible. Now let's get into the funding source of this thing. And one of the things that I need to point out to you, that it says that this IMPACT fee and the cost of construction for these three proposed projects is based on 2020, year 2020 estimates. That gave me a little bit of concern too, because if it's based on 2020 estimates, and am I going to have the funds for another two or three years maybe to get these projects started? Are they insinuating that the $2,571 IMPACT fee would be adjusted upwards to offset whatever increase in costs that a builder or whoever might incur? Well, one of the things you have to think about, and this is the applicant, although they're wanting to charge that person $2,571, to use the roads, apparently additional road usage, you have to consider that the applicant already pays the wheel tax, excise tax, fuel tax. How are those dollars going to support maintenance on existing roads? And we're not talking about in these projects, building new roads. We're talking about just making upgrades to what is currently there. The three projects they've outlined, County Road 144 and Morgantown, County Road 144 and Saddle Club, and then Molnix and Olive Branch, collectively come to about $6.7 million. I talked to Luke, he estimated that this IMPACT fee would generate about $3.5 million over the five-year period. Now, that's the residential side. He really didn't give an estimate on the commercial side. So that's a considerable shortfall there in funds just to do these first three projects. Now I get into the part where it really gave me heartburn, and that's the discriminatory nature of this IMPACT fee. And let me just give you a quick example of how this thing applies. Let's just say that you own 20 acres over your White River Township and you decide, you know, I'm going to split it and I'm going to subdivide another lot because I want to build a house for the wife and I. We're empty nesters now, the kids are gone. And so we're going to build a smaller home on our property. And we're going to have to pay $2,571 in addition for that building permit, even though we're still using the same roads. We haven't increased road usage at all. So the natural argument would be, well, somebody's going to move into your old house, right? Well, let's just assume that it's their daughter and her husband and their kids, who by the way are just renting a house across the road. Again, another family coming in and increasing road uses. So then logic would say, well, but the rental house, somebody will come there, and you're right, maybe they come from Plainfield, they are increasing road uses. Well, the burden there should be on the rental property, not on the original homeowner. Another example that I've made in regard to this, a retirement community, less than 55 and up retirement community. They build a house that's like 1,800 square feet. You've got two elderly residents, one car.
Right.
They're going to the store, the doctor's office, and maybe visiting some relatives. And they're putting about 10,000 miles a year on their car, $2,571. Conversely, you've got a family of six or eight, they build a 3,500 square foot home. Mom and dad's driving, the two oldest kids are all driving, they're averaging 15,000 mile a year, they're putting 60,000 miles on the road in comparison to an elderly company or a couple putting 10,000 miles. And that's the reason I felt like there was discrimination in application of this. There's no equity or fairness in $2,571, so I... A little bit of the problem, I have a wheel tax, but I don't get in the bed. I guess the thing that I'd just like to leave with you is that I'm not opposed to road funding. Lord knows we could use it. And I'm not opposed to working with Barbersville and their local agreement on joint projects. I am opposed to overtaxation of people, residents of the county, in this space. Now, if you can come up with a better formula, and I don't have the answer, I'm the first one to admit, I don't have the answer. But if we could come up with a better formula and the application of it, I wouldn't have much trouble supporting it. But the way it's currently written, I strongly oppose. If you have any questions?
Are you familiar with any, or Luke, or the attorney, anybody familiar with any other types of formulas that have been used? You said you don't have a formula, so, I mean, you have to have a base for this. And if it was not, I mean, either based on the size of the structure or, because you'll never be able to predict how many people may live because the empty nesters can have their 20 and 30 and 40 and 50-year-olds come back and live with them. So that sort of throws that one out the window. And then, you know, a certain-sized structure, 4,000 square feet would house more people than 1,800 square feet. So is there any what you consider to be a more equitable formula that would address what you're asking?
Well, the equitable formula in that regard would have to be predicated on square footage as a condition in the IMPACT fee, I would think. That would be logical to assume that, again, if you're building 3,500 square feet, you're going to have more residents there, more road usage. So there might be some, some way to come up with a compatible feature where you would have road trips, as they call it, road trips. And then, of course, road use. I think the usage part becomes a bigger concern, more so than, well, they're synonymous, I guess, road trips and usage. But if you've got four people in the family using the roads at a higher volume, keep in mind too, when the people use it at a higher volume, they're paying more in fuel taxes. So they are, you know, putting some money in in that regard for additional maintenance. I don't have the answer there. I'd be happy to work with somebody on a group basis, try to come up with something more fairer. Right now, I don't have that answer.
Luke, sir, the attorney, have you heard of any other alternatives?
Can we redraft this? I mean, just leave those parts out.
Do what?
Can this be redrafted?
The IMPACT fee ordinance has already been passed by the commissioners. This is the interlocal that goes along with it to show how it's going to be administered. So the IMPACT fee ordinance was passed last Thursday on second reading.
Yes.
With Commissioner West voting yes. If you hadn't figured that out. So this is just the administration portion of that ordinance.
But you don't have, you don't have the IMPACT fee if you don't have the interlocal. That's the reason I came this evening to address you.
I did, and this was a question for Luke and you, and Commissioner Walz to just take it to me.
I couldn't hear Sheen, I couldn't hear with that microphone. So I'm just kind of, I'm just watching people look around.
If we agree to this tonight, what we're doing is we're approving an appropriation. Correct?
No, not an incorporation, you're approving the interlocal agreement, which supports the IMPACT fee and the application of that IMPACT fee.
It designates how the IMPACT fee revenue will be spent, combining the revenue that's collected by both of us, how the administration of spending that towards projects will work. That's what this interlocal agreement is about.
So will it ever come before council again?
The interlocal agreement?
Five years, it's a five-year...
The interlocal will come in four years.
Yeah, like four on it and five on the other.
The IMPACT fee ordinance lasts for a maximum of five years. The interlocal agreement maximum under statute is four years. So it would need to be renewed at the end of that four-year cycle.
So $6.7 million.
Well, that's what was estimated on those three projects that Luke supported, or he supplied that in his proposal. That's where I got those numbers. I can give you specifically the County Road 144 and Morgantown Road is $2,650,000. Although I thought we were doing that in conjunction with the school in Barbersville already.
We have most of the property that we need to build at this point, but not the...
That's a roundabout, right?
Yeah, not the construction.
And then County Road 144, Saddle Club, and Molnix and Olive Branch, both of them estimated $2,070,000.
Okay, and then, you know what, Ben said about time is of the essence. And of course, you know, some of us have construction backgrounds, we understand that. Luke, what is of the essence here? What is, what is the timing of this that requires immediate action?
In terms of why we would be interested in getting this taken care of quickly, it has to do with the timeframe on when fees would actually start being collected under the ordinance. So once an ordinance is adopted, the local agencies can't start collecting IMPACT fees until at least six months after the date that the ordinance was adopted. The ordinance technically was adopted on the 28th, and that would trigger our six months here. But as Commissioner West mentioned, and I mentioned as well, because we did a joint study in partnership with the town, we have to, under statute, have an interlocal agreement that dictates how we're going to administer those funds, use of those funds in those projects. So this is, this would be out of my wheelhouse. If there's a delay in the adoption of the interlocal agreement, does that delay add to the time period, the six-month time period, before we can actually start collecting that revenue? I don't know the answer to that question. The sense of immediacy, I suppose, is the longer that it takes to start collecting this revenue, the more potential revenue that we're going to lose as development comes in in that time period. We're already six months behind under the statute. If we delay it anymore than any building permits that come in before we can collect the fees, we would not be charged that fee.
We've heard from dissenting, dissenting vote, who's back there, is that Commissioner Walz? Could you come forward and, so my understanding, this has been voted on by the commissioners and passed two to three, and you've had outside attorneys look at the ordinance, and could you just give a rebuttal to what?
Yeah, I mean, Kevin Walz, Johnson County Commissioner, we had this discussion in one of our commissioner meetings, and Commissioner West was adamantly against it, as you can hear. I've worked with Barbersville for probably the last six months on trying to collaborate, work this out. There are some things that we don't have finite figured out, but any time, I think this is the first one in the state that's ever been done through a county and a municipality or a city, town. It's been a difficult lift. We've got it this far. Collaboration with Barbersville has been really good. I mean, we've met, the attorneys have met. I know Commissioner West is concerned with some legal language. We've had three different attorneys look at that and substantiated that it's fine. There's nothing wrong with the legal aspect of this interlocal agreement. And Luke touched on some of these, the one thing I want to reiterate to everybody, it's not a tax, okay? This is a fee. That area over there, White River Township, has always been, it doesn't have a municipality. There's no governing body except for the county. So, you know, as history has told us, Greenwood is the annex to lot, and all of the big revenue money has been taken up. The golden mile rule has been shut down a little bit. We don't have a specific revenue stream for that area. And it's going to develop. I mean, when was the last interstate that came through Johnson County? In the 60s?
Right, yeah, that neglected, that area is more neglected.
And this is the way we've identified, and if you've seen the maps, you've got the maps and stuff where it identifies that area. That's the area we're concentrating on.
Right.
So, I mean, how else are you going to get the funding to keep that area up and...
It's been neglected for years.
I agree.
Long, long time.
I agree. And that's why we've kind of worked with the town of Barbersville on this. So, I mean, I can, we can go, I can, I can talk for another 30, 40 minutes. I mean, I just know Commissioner West and I have been at odds on this, you know, different perspectives. So I'm very confident with this, you know, with working with Barbersville and identifying the road projects that we need to look at. He's talking $6 million, and in a five-year period, this has to be totally reviewed again.
So the city of Greenwood, since they've annexed Barbersville area and they've kind of neglected the area, what about them stepping up some funds?
I don't think that's going to happen. I'm just being honest with you, I don't think that's going to happen. So that's a whole different discussion on a whole different basis there. So, I mean, I think the county's taking steps that we need to take with the RDC, with the SIMPACT thing. We're just, we're trying to get ahead of this curve, and the longer we wait, the further we fall behind. Because it's kind of drive down.
Oh, I get it. It's going to grow and it's going to be fantastic.
But you, you know, I know there's focus on, on the smaller homes, you know, the 20-acre theory with building a small house in that White River Township area, I don't, I don't think they're going to, I don't think that's going to materialize. I think they'll take that 20 acres and sell it to a developer.
Probably, eventually.
So, I mean, I just, the other side of that coin is that. So, I mean, we're just trying to move through the process and we've worked with Barbersville on this for many months, so.
And thank you both for stating, restating your opinions. But when I look at the map, the zone improvement plan area, you know, we see an area identified that's ripe for development, ripe for growth, and we're focusing resources between the two bodies, the governing bodies, if you will, that are involved in that area, in kind of a first-ever approach. And I think there's a lot of positive to that. You know, the opposite of this is if we were to not move forward and we then have to find resources outside of this to support what we need to do out there without assistance, potentially from Barbersville, that does become tax. And, you know, I don't know any other way to generate revenue. And so now you're potentially going to folks in Edinburgh or, you know, the east side of Johnson County.
Why won't Greenwood step up and help out a little bit?
I...
Have they been approached?
The, as far as Greenwood is concerned, everything east of 135 is, north of Whiteman Road, is within Greenwood's city limits. In terms of what their plans for that area are, a lot of that hasn't developed yet. My thought is that they are probably waiting until that development comes in to leverage getting some of the road improvements in that area, east of 135, taken care of. I don't see... I don't see any different than if Greenwood came to the county and asked us to spend money in Greenwood city limits. I think we would be resistant to that and most likely in the opposite case. Greenwood would be resistant to that as well. The, Rob, one thing that you touched on is we could, we partnered on this. And the thought process was we're facing the same problems in that area. Just because there is a town limit line doesn't mean one side of that line has problems that are different than the other. All of our roads are connected, they are intertwined, traffic flow is connected. We could have separately done our own studies and implemented our own fees, which would not have matched, which would put us in direct competition with each other when it comes to the location of future development, residential, commercial, or industrial. So we recognize that we don't want to be in competition because that doesn't help the overall area. That's why it was important to us to, to come up with a joint solution. And I think that's what we have here in the second call. Thank you.
I just, we got a couple of thoughts on this. My biggest problem and probably why I don't know is undoubtedly, especially in the White River Township area with sixty-nine going through, we're going to have some tough decisions to make in the future with possible taxes. Our funding mechanisms to pay for some massive road improvement additions in that area. And I feel like by implementing this impact fee, we're going to be, in a sense, double taxing the people affected by it, or affected by the Simpact fee. So that's, that's the bill that I'm having a couple of swatting on.
And just to clarify the question, what would be the, this is on new development only, correct? Yeah. So going back from where I was at before I interrupted, before one of that asked the question about why Greenwood or why not Greenwood? Is it, it, when you start talking about what the county has to do, you get that disparity between someone in Edinburgh saying, I don't want to pay for a road in White River Township or a trail, I don't want trails in Edinburgh if I live in White River Township. And this is, to me, we kind of narrowed in on our problem and are trying to get ahead of it. And I'm supportive of that effort. Is the language perfect? Probably not. Can the language be worked out for the next few years? Yes, I think it can be. Would any one side of this be harmed more than the other or helped more than the other? I think it'll be balanced. I, I, I feel that way based on our represent, representation at those, in, in this process. Meaning, I can't speak for Bargersville, their town council, but I know where the priorities of Commissioner Walls and Barrett and Mr. West lie. That's always county first. But sometimes we tackle large problems and give a little help. And this is a, I think, a great step in that, in that direction. So I'm, I mean, it certainly can carry on with the conversation, but we could also add.
I, I just wanted to mention, you know, I, I agree with Luke, Kevin, and you, Rob. And, you know, for, for all the reasons you gave, I understand Ron's position. But right now, this is the best proposal that's in front of us, even Ron indicated that he didn't have a better one. And something else that I was concerned about from the get-go is, and, and this is going to relieve some of the burden from Blue River, Nanava, Eam, perhaps Clark, Franklin. Those folks are seldom ever going to use those new, that new infrastructure, the roads going up there. So that's why I'm going to hope there's homeless.
Sorry, I don't want to, you did ask a question earlier, Ron, about other funding sources. Under statute, this is the funding source that's identified for this type of solution for dealing with new growth. I'm not aware of any similar statutory funding sources that would accomplish this thing. There's certainly the option of raising other local taxes. Was the avenue that we chose to go, but just to answer that question, I'm not aware of anything else in the statute that we're allowed to do to actually accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
I'm, I'm in favor of it, and I'm in favor of one simple reason. One of the things that I have had to learn and struggle with, having been a city councillor and now a county councillor. Last time I checked, my taxes said I paid both. And that everybody sitting up here pays county taxes and where they might live, they might be paying some additional taxes. But we are a region, we're a community, we're not White River Township by itself. I go to White River Township, I use the roads over there, I go to Bargersville.
I wish the people of Greenwood would, would help out for a community.
No, those roads are in the city.
Yeah, they're not in the city, yeah, they're not in the city. I mean, you know, and last time, several years ago, when people wanted to consider White River Township, the answer was no, as far as Greenwood being part of White River Township, if any of you remember that. But he, he, that as it may, that, you know, we are, I always want to look at the region, the community as a whole. And I think that this is assisting everyone and those people are paying the county taxes. I wish there was a more perfect way to do it. But I don't see delaying it. Perhaps that will come up and that the question that I asked and all of you have simply, simply answered it, that there is not an alternative funding source that you're aware of, correct? Nobody knows of an alternative formula, not funding source, alternative, alternative formula. So I am supportive of it and I think, you know, the time is now to move on and, and not, because I think that's going to grow out there in a way that this community has not seen in a long time.
I also wanted to mention now, before this went to the commissioners, land commission, this was before the planning commission, this impact fee. Commission of the nine folks and it passed before it went on to the commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner West, yes, Commissioner West asked for another word.
Just one quick thing. And I addressed this, maybe the most important part of this whole aspect is the wording in this document. And Rob, you're in the banking business.
Right, where do you want to have this?
And I, I can just imagine you making a loan and a loan document saying that the person that has to pay the money back shall endeavor, maybe if possible, or maybe not at all. You wouldn't, there's no way in the world that you would sign or put out a document with those caveats in it that, that you could pay it back if you endeavor or not, if possible or not, or maybe don't even have to regret. That's my real heartburn in this whole thing, is to allow a document to go forward, any of you gentlemen. And, and the, and the question come up in the commissioners meeting, well, why do you got to have trust? Well, you have trust, trust. I'm telling you, the church, jail's full of people that somebody had trust in. You don't do a document based on trust. You do it on exact wording that specifies and spells out exactly what the terms and conditions are. And to leave a, a document of this nature so unopened or unentended in this, in the formality of the payment structure and the financing, it's just beyond me that anybody would be able to position to approve. Now, go back to the timing. Again, I asked that, that we strike that one, one line up. And, and the position of the other two board members at that time were, you know, we got to move quick. For thirty days, you got a six month delay, I'm going anyway, thirty days wouldn't make a whole lot of difference, I wouldn't think, in order to get something right. You wouldn't do a, you wouldn't do a loan document with that wording, you know?
It's not an extension of credit, but I understand what you're saying. You're also trying to manage the inflow. You made a good point, you know, residential, you got residential permits, you got commercial activity, you got the city or the town doing both, the county doing both. And the timing of those things are not always going to be equal dollar for dollar. So, yeah, it may get a little lopsided, but the provision in the contract allows it to get right sized or true, true up at some point in the future. I think that's why there's a, I think that's why there's a finite time on this. If possible. I, I, I don't know. I mean, we've had counties and we've had attorneys look at it and they've had their attorneys look at it. And I, I don't know, there seems to be more favoritism in that than, than not. But I, your concern is, is well noted, thank you. And I'm sure it's been expressed at the commissioner's meeting as well.
We've beaten over that pretty good.
I do want to express an opinion. I, I'm all for the collaborative justice, everyone's going through and, I think, you know, we've all voiced those needs going forward for all these projects. There are so many holes though in this interlocal agreement that I will not be able to vote for it. When I look at the timing issues, times they have the essence, none of that is addressed in this interlocal agreement as to when a project would start or end. The end of a project is so critical and that is never addressed in this interlocal agreement. There are several other items that I'm not going to get into here, I'll just get, I'll speak generally. I do like the collaborative effort. I do like the way that this targets a certain area for a specific need. And each one of these projects, I think it's the answer. I think this needs to be fine tuned. And I'm just wondering if we can postpone this for a time so that we could further fine tune this memorandum, so that, or this, the local agreement. And if I do that, or if I suggest that, am I creating heartburn? Are the funds already going to be able to be collected? They have, the, the fee, the fee has been approved by the commissioner.
Yes.
So those funds are going to be collected.
Well, after a six, a minimum of six months after the adoption of the ordinance.
July twenty eighth.
These will be collected, but there won't be an agreement of us, if we don't both approve it, how you'll spend it, correct?
Yes, and, and whether or not, since the interlocal is required, if there's multiple planning jurisdictions in the same study, whether that would impact how soon we would be able to collect fees. Or if, if the interlocal is delayed, does that mean that we have to wait six months? They'll have to, you know, local son. I, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know that anyone that's actually, other than us, has encountered that as a possibility. Typically, these are not partnerships like we're doing, what we have. Decisions will be that are implemented by specific cities or towns and not jointly.
When will the town of Bargersville take up this matter?
Tomorrow, tomorrow? Yes. They, on their agenda, are scheduled for both the adoption of the ordinance for their jurisdiction as well as approval of the central.
What we can do with county councils to best and table it. It looks like things have been tabled before.
That's, it's occurred. We also take action when brought before us.
Well, I, I guess, I could have no problems going for this plan because nothing else has been that we know of we can do. If we didn't already approve a nearly nine million dollar library. I mean, I'm not going to be a part of the taxes and spend county council. I mean, we got our priorities, we need to get our priorities straight in this county.
Let's focus on tonight's agenda and, and the interlocal agreement. So, directed to county attorney. Options are, it's presented for us tonight for discussion and motion and decision. One of those options could be tabling to give a certain timeframe to work everything out. What I'm hearing is that there's really no alternative from a funding calculation methodology. There's nothing else. Statute provides this. And as far as tweaking formulas, there's really no alternative. And, and Ron, I, I respect what you're saying about some of the examples you gave, but I, I would, I, you could probably argue all day whether those are realistic or, or not. And I would hate to fund, develop a formula based on a lot of hypotheticals. I, I think it's a fair approach and one that can be revisited in, in no less than December thirty first of twenty twenty-four. This would start the program, assuming Bargersville comes along with it tomorrow. I'm going to add, has, has anybody had commissioners or county attorneys, any concerns of, of, expressed by Bargersville at this point or proposed language? So we have no reason to believe it. Okay. Well.
The county council, their required vote. Not sure what tabling accomplishes.
Words matter, words matter. This document is not perfect. Words matter and I'm not, I can't pass something on assumptions, guesses, and hope. Hope, I mean, it's just, no, we, we have to get something like this ready.
So what is, what is the tabling?
I don't know.
What is accomplished? If we already have had all the attorneys looked at it, if we've had two thirds vote, I'm not sure what we accomplished. If not.
One more quick thing. Although I said that I didn't have an alternative funding mechanism. You give me thirty days and I'll give you one. And I'll give you one based on a, a more, on the essence of fairness. Because right now you're looking at this through the eyes of a developer, where these fees are going to be imposed upon the homeowner, it's going to go through the developer process. In fact, the matter, the developer, they make certain road improvements, he gets credit for that, that he could then give to the homeowners in a way of reducing the impact fee. I don't see that happening. I think he's going to pass the impact fee through and, and keep those credits yourself. But nevertheless, I, I'm speaking more towards the individual. The one guy that wants to build a house, the fee that he's going to pay to use the roads that he's already using. Give me thirty days, I'll give you an, an alternative funding source based on, on a higher degree of fairness and with some wording and that needs to be in place, so removal of certain terms.
There's already an appeal process, correct, by statute? Yeah. I'm prepared to, to entertain a motion.
The motion is for us to, we're approving the interlocal, is that our motion? I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement, the bar, the bill accord regarding the road impact.
A motion from Ron Deere, a second from. A motion from Ron Dear, a second from Pete Ketchum, any discussion? All right, now, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Nay.
Yes.
Jim Isen.
Nay.
Rob Anderson.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Ron Dear.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
No.
Pass four-three. Oh, my God.
Thank you. Very good.
You see that in the next election.
That concludes the other business section of tonight's agenda. We move on to old and new business. With that is item F-one, approval of rules of the Johnson County Council. I'm going to ask if we could take them, Ron, we can get a break, maybe we could flip-flop here, items F-one and F-two, is it a jail update? Appropriate, thank you.
Any councilors, I'm Wes Harrison, the owner's representative for the jail expansion project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My news is good news tonight, so we've got, uh, the jail is progressing quite nicely. The new Sallyport and renovated book-in area will be turned over in about a month. Progress has been very good on that, and the user group is excited to get back in, uh, under their wings and be able to use that as soon as possible, so we're pushing that schedule as much as we can. The pod area, the new pod portion of the project, all this, uh, new cells have been set, they're in place. The mezzanines and the stairs to reach the second floor areas are being installed now. The block walls are nearing completion and should be done by the end of this month. And, uh, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing system and technology systems are all being installed. And on schedule to turn that over to the user group by, uh, about the middle of October. So, uh, right now, I can report that we're on schedule and on budget. And, uh, hopefully, we'll head that direction, don't foresee anything upcoming. I think we're kind of through most of the unforeseen's. We have a small portion of renovation in the existing building to finish up. Uh, that will happen, uh, late spring, but, uh, the most part, I think, we're in good shape and forward. Feeling any questions, or I know, uh, Mr. Myers has been over for a tour. Mr. Dear, I think you came over to join part of that, but if any of you would like to come over for a tour, it's, uh, interesting to see that other construction, so if there's anything I can answer for you, or feel free to get ahold of me, we'll make that happen, so, yeah.
Thank you. Wes, any questions?
I just wanted to thank the sheriff for the time sent by his staff, and I met with sheriff and the staff to talk about stuff. And then I took a tour, and it was amazing to me to see the, the technology incorporated into, uh, construction and how that's going to benefit and save time and, uh, and, and, you know, the repairs that can be made easily behind the walls. I thought that was so innovative and.
Yeah, it, it's pretty incredible the way technology has advanced to the point where a guy sitting in a room remotely can plus four of them, so, yeah, so, but, and I'll reiterate too, the sheriff has been, and his staff have been fantastic on operations. And that's why this character process goes so smoothly, so appreciate his help and, uh, and I can assist anybody, Wes, for a tour, or any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. All right. With, uh, item F-two, I'm sorry, it was F-two, F-one, approval of rules of the Johnson County Council. I believe in your packet or at your, at your seat here, or the revised rules of the, of the county council. I believe we, I'm going to use the term ad hoc committee, we had an ad hoc committee formed. Um, Pete, I think you took the lead on that, if I'm not mistaken, but it would, maybe get us up to speed here and.
To be transparent, I mean, to, to me, this started with, um, uh, the, um, what I thought was the necessity to have a, um, a majority of the elected council to have any action that would, uh, result in an increase of, of taxes or fees. And in speaking with the county attorney, um, it, it kind of already made sense because we didn't, Jones County did not have bylaws, and rather than have a standalone, um, policy or ordinance like that, we, uh, if it was mentioned that, it would be a good idea just to have some, some kind of bylaw that, uh, so we don't just automatically default to, you know, the state regulations on that. So, that's how it came to be. That was my motivation, so.
Thank you, Pete. Any members of the committee want to comment before we? Take action.
Okay, but I'll give it up to council, the committee, you said the committee.
Yeah, we'll start there, then.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know those folks. I, I think that this is a tremendous, um, explanation that gives everybody an understanding of how we are, will operate. It covers just about everything I can imagine, and believe me, I put, put the attorney through several what-ifs. And she came up, you know, with a solution in here for every what-if that I could think of, and believe me, in my past, I've been in some of those what-ifs. And, uh, I think it's good government, that it's a majority of elected officials, which is basically what this addresses when it comes to any decision, not that we take any action, we have to have the majority of the council. We went through all the scenarios, if we only had five people, and something came up, still would take four. We only had four, it still would take four. And sometimes we get a little bit confused about forums. Forum says that you have to have that many people present to do business. But that doesn't mean that you have to have, uh, that all those have to vote the same way on what the process is. And what is not said in here, basically, but is the reality that in the worst-case scenario, on the day of Zoom has gone away, which is improved it for all of you as far as the communications. But my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we don't know how long Zoom opportunities will exist. So the days that come when somebody's sick or out of town, we could be down to a lower number of people attending councils than what are traditionally attended council in the last, since last March. So therefore, we could be in situations where we have five people or we have a forum. Uh, and I think this out like, outlines everything that we need to do to be able to do business. And I've commented before, and then I'll say it again, I think it's good government. I don't think any negative or anything in here, I didn't see anything that caused me any heartburn. And, uh, I will make the motion if there is no further discussion.
I had a question, if, um, last week, there was some word, um, my words not coming to me right now, I'm sorry, I'm just so mad about the taxes, please. Anyway, so if we dispute on, um, putting somebody on a board, um, do we take a vote at that point? Or is it still going to go by, um, protocol that was done prior? Which was if they were on the board before, they automatically get it the next time?
Well, it's not protocol, it's automatic, they, most likely would be, um, if they, we have decided they are seeking reappointment that, and they have served well, in the opinion, then they most likely would be denominated. That is usually what happens, but it is not automatic. So, um, I think this addresses board appointments, that only one person can be nominated, uh, for a position. Then, then you would take action, and then if, if it's not favorable, you would appoint someone else.
No, 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 it allows for appointments, multiple appointments to be nominated. The chair opens, or the president opens, the floor takes the nominations, there has to be a person, second for each nomination. Then you vote on the nomination that was done first, this is where you get last.
Did that address your question? Okay, thank you. Any further conversation or discussion on the rules of the, proposed rules of the county council? All right, I, I would like to thank everyone who participated on that. I had hesitation on the front end about this. I think, um, we went from no rules to four and a half pages on the attempt to, to address one issue. So to me, it felt a little bit like overreach, but I, I spent time with Sheena and Zach, and, uh, they went through my concerns, and, and thank you for that. And I'm certainly ready to entertain that motion now.
And make a motion that we approve the rules of the Johnson County Council, as presented.
A motion from Ron Dear, a second from Jim Isen, for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, and the opposed? Are there none that passes? And those will take effect immediately. Thank you. All right, that is, uh, all the business on our agenda, would entertain a motion to return. Several motions, uh, Brian, we'll go with, uh, John Eddie Myers first and Ron Dear second. I thought he said second, actually said the word second. Thank you, Zach and Sheena, for that work until far. Any good? All right, thank you, everybody.